Okay, welcome everybody. Today is December 21st, first, excuse me. We're here, we kind of got later start today, but we don't have much on the agenda, so we're going to move right along. This time, I would please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, I think we have one addition to the agenda, is that correct?
We need to approve what closing time there is on Christmas Eve. We need to add that.
So that's an action item. We want to put it under commissar discussion?
Yep.
That works.
And Christmas Eve closure.
And then, um, is Dave going to add something? Are you adding something to the agenda?
Can it wait?
Okay.
So we'll do it for next week?
Whatever, whatever you feel.
We can have a discussion, but we just got to make a decision.
That's fine. Whatever you go come forward.
Okay, I need a motion to amend the agenda and then accept it?
I'll make a motion that we add the other agenda items into Dave's agenda.
And approve the rest.
And approve the rest.
I'll second that motion. If it's been moved to second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Hey, the next one, item, it's an action item, Camerac Resort and Brundage Mountain Search and Rescue Memorandum of Understein. Under Sheriff Dean.
Sir, um, yeah, we just refreshed these. We didn't change a whole lot, and we just needed to refresh them. And, uh, so that's what they're up for, is just resigning. I'll, uh, I'll get them to them to re-sign it, and then get them to Doug after you guys sign and okay them and go from there.
You know, do we get any compensation for search and rescue on those?
Well, uh, if they loan us their people, then yes, what we would bill for, for them out conducting search and rescue operations. So, uh, once, once they're off of Camerac's property or Brundage, then they become, they fall under our command and control. And basically, if, if they even are on their property, we, we're really in charge of the search and rescue. But this is mostly just covering them on work comp. If they come off of their property on, uh...
I was going to say, two things I was just curious about is like, what's the rate that we bill those hours at? If they come off, is it their regular hourly rate or is it a set rate that the department has?
It would be a set rate. What's, what's reimbursed to the department?
The other thing that wasn't real clear, um, is in the Brundage permit particularly, or in the Brundage agreement, it says their permit area versus the ski area boundary. I think it uses both of those terms. So are we talking about search and rescue activities outside the ski area boundary? Or are we talking about search and rescue, uh, beginning outside the permit boundary?
Outside the ski area boundary.
Okay.
Yeah. So I know, are you, you're talking like their cat area and all that other stuff?
Well, even, even like backside of the resort back there. So people wander out, you know, like they think they're going back and just skiing somewhere and don't realize that where they end up and the next stop is Warren Whiting Road. Or the flats between, you know, the highway and...
That would fall under us, yeah. Yeah.
Guys, I had that conversation with, uh, their ski patrol director, and there was a little confusion, I think, as far as what their responsibility was versus what the county responsibility was.
Jana?
Yeah, Jana.
Yeah, I've been dealing with her for quite a while on it, or a couple, three weeks now, and it seemed like she's pretty clear on what if I can touch base with her again and make sure she, she understood and stuff. But, you know, like she said, anything, anything on a mountain, we'll, we'll handle, and we're not going to need it when we go over the backside, like you, you're talking about and everything, they'll get a hold of us. And stuff, I mean, does that answer what you're looking at, or?
That's what I understood it as.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify it.
They had, they had a situation like that last year, where we responded out there for someone off the backside.
Yeah.
And they usually find them before we get all, everybody out there anyways. But they just want permission, saying yes, now you fall under us, go ahead and look. Or go ahead and...
Yes, well, oh, sorry, it's just a little different scenario between the two different resorts, since one's on a state lease and the other one's on a fourth, fourth search permit.
Right.
Ski area boundary is one boundary, and their permit, permit area. Boundary, yeah, is quite a bit larger.
I'll, I'll clarify with them and, uh, see what we can get on their permit boundaries for Brundage and stuff. But it definitely, definitely wants to let the ski area boundary, then we, it would fall under us. And that permit area is what I, that's what they use for the cat skiing and all that stuff mostly, or?
Yeah, include that stuff that goes off the backside of the 451, though, is what I understood. And I, I don't know, and even I, I mean, I've been around there for three years plus, but I don't know the difference on the backside going to the north, like towards...
Harley Meadows and all that, yeah.
Reservoir, where does their permit boundary begin and ski resort end?
Okay. I'll see if I can get a map from...
Yeah, so maybe just clarify that with the map.
Okay.
It's a search and rescue pretty well set up. They got enough people.
Yeah, they look great, yeah. They're...
We got it, you got a new trailer and all that stuff.
Well, we gave them the, our command trailer and put it to use that way, and, uh, you know, it's working out great. We're getting use out of that trailer now. It'll, uh, if we have, if Larry, Larry said, you know, if we even have a law enforcement incident where it doesn't involve search and rescue and we need it, and, you know, he'll tow it out and drop it off wherever we need it and set it up. And so it's working out perfect, and the trailer getting used instead of...
I know, at one time, that was kind of like dispatch. It was hard to keep that full guys interested in doing that.
Yeah, no, Larry's doing a great job with it. And the last one out at, um, out at the mine, you know, they came out the night before, set up, no complaints, known, um, for the, uh, 80-year-old that was lost hunting up there at the, um, Dewey Mine, and, uh...
Uh, he just grew back there?
Oh, he was down in...
I don't know, Jeff might know that crick area.
Um, hell...
Hellhole Crick or something like that.
There's a crick out there that's...
Sounds like a good place to...
Yeah, I know. Yeah, he was down in some crick back in there, but...
That was what he named it.
Yeah. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people drive, clear out there and then hunt, clear down to the middle for it.
Yeah.
And it's a pretty popular with hunters. I know a lot of guys that go back there, but, and to pack everything uphill, ooh, ooh.
Yeah, yeah, it's quite a pick.
Okay, everybody good with this? I'd entertain a motion to approve the MOUs.
I'd move to approve the MOUs with Camerac Resort and Brundage Mountain for search and rescue.
I'll second that.
Wouldn't say any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Has someone signed?
Yeah.
One now. Got a big plans for Christmas?
Nope.
And home garden the fort, huh? Well, that's good. He can sign underneath.
Sorry, I'll...
Let me correct. Thank you. Okay, anything else, Dave?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll move on down to our agenda. Our next item is an action item, permission to surplus a 2,000 Ford Ranger.
We missed a minute in, um...
Oh, we did. We did, didn't we? I'll come back to it. Go ahead, Jeff.
Permission to surplus 2,000 Ford, Ford Ranger.
Where's, whose was this? Where did it come from?
Building maintenance facilities.
Oh, that green one?
The green one.
Little green one that?
Yep. Got 140,000 on it.
The end of an era right there, that green truck.
That's been here a long time.
Been here a long time, used to be YCAPs, uh, been here, it's got 140,000 on it. Salt's getting to it. We put a new, used, new axle under it last year because the rust ate through the axle tube underneath, between the spring and the axle tube. No, it's underneath the sticker, the factory sticker that's on your vehicles, that's wrapped around your axle. Take those stickers off.
Good to know.
That salt got underneath that sticker and ate a hole through the axle tube.
And that's pretty thick stuff, isn't it?
Oh, it's...
Jeff, ask me what's under a vehicle. Come on, really?
Stickers, yes.
And I'm assuming you're going to take it down to the guy down in...
Nope, I'm doing the gov deals, it's all online.
Okay, that's right.
Yep, and then I'll have another Dodge bed to request next Monday.
So what is, what are they using right now? Buildings and grounds, they have a replacement?
Um, so the sheriff's office vehicle that we had to put a new motor and tranny in last year, they didn't want it back, so we took it, and that's what Scott Klingon is driving now.
So we don't have to buy a new one to replace this one?
No. Nope, it's just old and needs to go away.
Okay.
Speaking of buildings and grounds, did they get their skid steer yet?
I haven't been part of it.
Okay.
That was between Scott and Chad. Once everything got okayed, we worked out the details on what he needed.
Well, hopefully you guys can use it in the summer.
Well, we'll use it. Yeah, something a little bigger definitely help us more on paving, patching projects than our little one that can't hardly lift a bucket full of dirt by itself, so...
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we authorize the roads or superintendents to surplus 2,000 Ford Ranger. Second?
I'll second.
Who didn't say? Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Good to see you next weekend on a, on a truck bed, huh?
On the conversation about using that Lake Fork office? Just another five or 10 minutes?
Okay, we, we can do that with next, and then we'll come back and do the minutes.
Okay, perfect.
Next one is also an action item. We're a little early, but we can, we're only a couple of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject just real quick?
Sure.
Hey, Jeff, I put those titles in your box. Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, our next item is an action item, discussion decision on a line West Central Economic Development Council utilized Valley County Lake Fork office. My first question is, are you still using that, Larry, for your group advisory meetings? Yeah, please, sorry. That's in the evening, I take it.
That's the conference room.
So I use the center office. The center office is where our office, where all our tools are, and I don't use that large front area at all. The, uh, back part of it is, um, a meeting room, and we did buy the tables for that, but, uh, yeah. I, we just use it when we can, COVID, you know?
So, Jerry, do you know, they just want to use the front conference room?
So what's happened since Andrew will be leaving us? We're looking at a, a longer-term situation with the Economic Development Council. And it's always been that we wanted a full-time office for staff to be able to go to and utilize. And so we're just looking for the, you know, whatever's available out there. And I mentioned that we had that front office space that would be great because people could walk right in, the, the EDC person would be right there to be able to meet with people, and there is a conference room in the back as needed. So, yes, I'm asking just for that front area and use the conference room as needed, and, uh...
And Jeff, isn't that already set up with computer and all that stuff? Internet?
I don't think it has a computer in there.
Internet's there.
Internet stuff, it's all wired for...
All wired ready, yep.
And actually, I, I wouldn't want them to have any access to the network or anything like that. So whoever this person is will be coming with their own computer. They can use Wi-Fi, um, you know, as long as they have avail, the availability to get on public Wi-Fi, which...
So is this person going to be a five day a week? Eight, eight, eight hours a day?
Yes, it won't be that much unless they choose it to be. So that's the whole thing. We don't know yet what that looks like, but a lot of people don't like to work from their home. They do want a central location. And honestly, my garage is half-full of the EDC stuff. Andrew's garage is half-full of EDC stuff. And so we're just trying to find a centralized location that makes sense for an office space. This is an important part of our economy up here and make sure that this group is vibrant, and we're trying to expand their reach. And I really like the fact that the Lake Fork site is not within any city because then it doesn't look like the EDC is catering to any one of the cities.
So are you talking forever?
Until...
Till we kick you out?
Until, you know, until needed by the county, honestly, so...
I didn't mean to tell it like that, but that office was built that way in case we ever get divided up into highway districts. Valley County will get divided into two districts. That's why the office is like that.
So, yeah, I mean, if the county has a need, absolutely. It'd be an annual, you know, lease-type situation. I'm asking for it to be part of our donation to the EDC so that there is not an expense there. And I'll recuse myself from the, the decision at the end of the day, since I do sit on that board and I'm the one requesting it. But I think it's an important, you know, right now, it's not being utilized. The, it's becoming more of a vibrant center since our recycling center is there. That's where the people belong, is going to be there.
Jeff, do you know, is it still full with desks and chairs?
It is.
It's got a few things in there.
There's a hard hat that looks like it might have come from the 70s.
I'll work with Scott on getting that cleaned out.
Is that your supervisor helmet?
I just donated, I donated one. More likely it's sadly one of Robinson's old ones. I, I don't know, I haven't been in there for a while. It was totally jam-packed for a...
No, it went there, you can even walk through there.
Scott was talking about cleaning it out, and I'll work with Scott to make sure that it gets cleaned out appropriately. And I'd like to walk through there.
You get to have somebody in there, isn't it?
And I think, maybe part of the deal is for the free rent. You guys clean the restrooms.
Yeah, it's fine. I think that that's more than...
You don't clean them, you're locking that door again. People will be going upstairs, but...
I think it would be helpful to have somebody in there on a regular basis.
It's underutilized, and I, I'm completely happy to see that as a good location for the EDC right now or the director. But I do think it's important to just make sure that it's, it's, you know, maybe we say it the three-month kind of thing, if, if we have plans for something to change, that we give them as much notice as possible, but, you know, three to six months.
You want to make that motion?
I will make a motion that we allow the Economic Development Council utilize the Valley County Lake Fork office and say that we would give them a minimum of three-month notice if we decided we needed to change that up.
I'll second that motion. You're recusing yourself?
I'll recuse myself.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And you said you'll work with Scott to get it cleaned out, sterilized and everything else we got to do.
Is there a key? Okay. So Danny should have a key?
I, I got a, I got a key. I made a bunch that front door. I made a bunch of keys for that. I gave the guys, there's one in the box in there. Oh, yeah, I just happen to see me or Danny, one of them, one of them.
I'll grab it.
Doug, do you need an agreement, like we did with the folks from...
I would defer to Carol, but I think it would be wise to have...
Some sort of agreement.
Some sort of agreement in place.
Sure. I think we could use similar to the one that we have for Department of Labor. Something that we could just...
Where is Department? They're all, and doing it from home now. I forgot all about that. Okay, we're going to go back down on our agenda a little bit. We skipped a few things. First item is an action item. We have the meeting minutes of December 14th. Everybody good with those?
I didn't see anything, so...
I'm good with them, I, yes, I'm good.
Want to motion in a second?
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of December 14th.
A second.
Wouldn't say it all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is also an action item. Normally on Christmas Eve, we usually kick everybody out of here early, and I don't remember if it's two or three o'clock, I really don't. Was it noon? I thought it was lunch. You went to lunch and everybody went home after that.
I think that sounds great.
Doug, since your department's impacted, do you have a conversation either way?
We have to stay open.
Okay.
But we, uh, so we've made arrangements for the, um, the courts will be open till 5:00. The recording will be open, and we will have it staffed. The only issue then is, uh, the entranceway. I, I mean, technically, again, we have to remain open, so does, uh, the courthouse security have to stay here?
Yeah, I would, I would think so.
It, it's difficult and it's unfortunate, but, uh, we have a requirement. Unless, I, I don't know how it would work and if the commissioners made it. Let me backtrack a little bit. It will be interesting now that, uh, the federal government has recognized it as a federal hallway, federal holiday, if that will continue and potentially go to state and county government. I don't know if, and if that takes effect, then it will be automatically closed, right? If the commissioners...
Yes, if it's a national holiday, yeah.
If the commissioners recognize it as a state and local holiday.
Is that for Christmas Eve day?
My understanding, the executive order that was issued was for federal employees, the federal government, uh, to be closed on Christmas Eve. But we don't know if that's going to be continued, uh, so...
So that was just discussed this week?
That was, uh, President Trump, um, issued that executive order, I believe, two weeks ago.
Okay.
So getting back to this situation, though, unfortunately, our office and the, the clerk's office and the courts have to remain open, have to be available for any members of the general public to do a recording or to request a protection order. Uh, so we will not have the ability to close.
So do you know the treasurer's office? Is there a time deadline on their side that would matter?
December 20th, I think, is what state pay taxes, huh?
I think, uh, prior to this getting to the, the commissioners, I think each elected official and department head were going to make a decision to close their office with the understanding that when the employees leave, they would be using PTO time. Now that it's come to the commissioners, are the commissioners going to allow employees to get paid, or are they going to have to utilize their PTO time?
I think it would be just paid.
Just paid. So what we done in the past? Okay. So I'll make a motion then that we close, I don't want to say this, close the courthouse on Christmas Eve day at noon and allow employees to go home. You need to pardon there about, they'll still be paid.
That would be your guys'...
And they will still receive compensation for the full day.
Second now?
I hope we're not forgetting anything. Will that work, Doug?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so move to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, our next item. Come on for another 20 minutes. Folks, if you need a break, now's the time to take them.
So I sent you guys the old, um, consulting document of, like...
Everything's solid.
That was sent out last time. And I didn't know, I asked for this to be on here since, since we haven't responded to her one way or another. I don't know if you want, we can discuss this one more on, I guess, but this needed up, if we're going to make a decision or if we're going to have another hearing with the fire department and the different departments and what they want to do or what, so...
So Doug, do you know that short of this in 2008, why they didn't go forward with it?
I apologize, I was not focused on your guys' conversation.
On the impact, so...
Cindy told me that they didn't feel that it was worth it at that time. They didn't have the volume.
So they just dropped the whole thing?
So they just dropped it. Doug, have you been following the state tax, uh, recommendations? The three out of the legislative committee that we're following? You have been?
Yes.
Are you good with that 5% Doug?
Not really.
My question is, is that, is there information, do you have readily available on what that would do to us? Like, like what each one of those would do to us? So we kind of know how to speak with our legislators? Because, I mean, there's three different proposals there. Actually, there's more than that, but, I mean, one of them is at 4%, one's at 5%. So I don't know where to get good information on which one I really should be advocating for.
You know, honestly, I think we should kind of see, see what they pass, whether or not Tewa can go through.
I'd rather call them...
Have they talked about what they're going to do with Fergone? Does Fergone go away?
Yeah, that's one of the conversations too. Or taking and allowing us only three months where the carryover, uh, budget, which that doesn't even carry us long enough to get from October, January.
No.
So, I mean, three months does not work, but six months is what they're talking about. So our general fund could have no more than six months reserve in it, and, uh, Fergone would go away. I mean, there's a lot on the table this year.
You know, the stuff I've seen, and I haven't been familiar with the most, was the CPI was involved in there. Well, that's not going to work because we're going to lose out on inflation. That's just going to go backwards for it, so that doesn't work. And then they talked about homeowners exemption and circuit breaker, and all that is, is a tax shift. That doesn't really, really reduce property taxes.
And they're worried too because the commercial values are going down so far now because there's so many businesses that are working from home and saying, we don't need this commercial space anymore. They think the commercial values are going to really go down, and that's a tax shift also.
That probably won't affect us as much. I mean, it's going to affect Boise and some of the bigger cities a lot more.
I don't know. I mean, we do have some commercial base up here, but...
Not at that scale, though.
Not at that scale, no.
No.
We don't have enough commercial in it, so that there's this supply and demand. They would probably keep ours full. Well, and I, and they're looking to shift a lot more to, to, um, sales tax, increase in the sales tax. But if you think about small communities, really, if they're looking at the state overall, you get a small community that's not visitor-based, and they lose all revenue if they shift that. But we still have a lot of rural Idaho that doesn't depend on law, or, uh, visitors.
Yeah, the small counties that aren't growing are really going to take it apart.
Yeah.
That's the thing that I saw, is that you're going to have to go backwards in some of these counties, but we're fortunate where we got so much growth. But I know there's been some talk too about pulling the state funding for the health districts and turning all that back to the counties.
And...
And there also talk about, you have to be an elected official to be on the health district board. We decided, we're going to wait and see what really gets shoved down the pipe at the legislature before we get all riled up and hire a bunch of lobbyists or whatever. Let's see what it's going to be first.
There's a lot of conversation around unfunded mandates also, and the court system is an unfunded mandate where we have to do the court's business without receiving compensation for it. So there's a lot of conversation around unfunded mandates too. But Doug, if you, if you guys are looking at anything from the courts, you know, the clerk's, perspective, I'd really like to know your thoughts on which of those we really should be advocating against or for. And then there were the long conversation around, instead of SRS doing PILT funding and making, you know, PILT more fair, but, um, the boundary county commissioner told me to ask the assessor's office what really would be the difference for us, um, because...
Based on the value?
Yeah, and based on the population base because that population is part of that calculation, that we may make more on SRS than we would on PILT. calculation, that we may make more on SRS than we would on PILT. So I guess I'll, I'll ask you now. There's so much research for it, too.
A lot of stuff to keep up with all the time. After while you go out, let's just see what gets proposed. And what do they call that? Actual legislation that actually goes to committee and.
I would certainly like to have a conversation on what we would really feel strongly about, though, so that our legislators know when they're sitting up there how we feel on the different conversations.
Sherry, will you put out an all points deal for everybody going home at Christmas Eve? Since you have that list?
I can do that. What's the other? I'm going to ask David, so I apologize, but I sent out a thank you to the employees on Thanksgiving, and I think it came from my email, because I got the responses. I can't figure out how to send a Valley County Commissioner email. So I will.
That's my problem with the whole, that whole new email system, is if I want to email that person, you guys get it, too. I can't. And so the only way you can do that is to forward that to your own personal and then go that way, just to e, just to text back or email back to that one person. So you guys don't have to deal with all those comments and emails.
So when you hit reply all, just delete us?
How do you do that? You just tap and wipe it off?
Yeah.
Because he told me to hit, do that, just send it to my, my own email.
Then if you hit reply, you're replying to your own email.
Right. I get, I get it.
Yeah. So that we can just highlight that Valley County and just delete the Valley County.
That's good to know. I didn't know how to do that. It's like, I don't want to bother you guys with this stuff, but you don't need to have to do it. So we got about 15 minutes for our next agenda. Do you want to leave the cameras on? Okay.
Hi there.
I need to call you.
Okay.
Your name came up as maybe somebody that would want to serve on our road advisory.
Oh.
So we're helping Jeff to kind of set some priorities and would really like representation from each one of the communities.
Right.
So I'll be reaching out if you want to think about that.
Yeah.
You know, if that's something you have time to do. We have a pretty good group, lots of different people with different backgrounds. And so Jeff had made mention that, you know, you might be a good person to add to that.
Yeah, I know the South end of the county fairly well.
Yeah.
So yeah, I didn't have any chance to see what, what you can say, so.
Awesome. I will send you an invite for our next meeting.
Okay.
We meet the first Wednesday at 3:30.
Okay.
And usually I try and schedule a Zoom. Hopefully, we're going to have some new technology coming up shortly. And, or being in the courthouse and just distance. That's always a good option.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
What happens?
Pretty good group. We've made some really good progress so far. I'm really excited about, you know, kind of what's coming out of it. Jeff's got some great help tomorrow.
Thank you.
How's it going, Steve?
Good, very well.
Kind of wish it was snow instead of raining, huh?
Oh, man. We're best.
Yeah. We drove over to Cabarton Bridge yesterday, and there were six inches of slush on Cabarton, and man, you had.
Oh, yeah.
Really big. They got it wiped off this morning.
Oh, God.
But.
It's okay, cold. Next couple days.
I was going to say, it'll change driving conditions dramatically.
Yeah.
They scrape potter down to the ice, and there's like a blue glare ice layer that's probably an inch thick underneath. So I got turned out on a potter this morning, and it was like, oh.
Keep going straight.
Four-wheel drive, just to, just to get to the Farnham Market out there.
Well, this will pull the frost out of the ground this rain, and that's good, too, because it was frozen down about two, three inches.
Was it?
At least it wasn't any deeper, so.
Right.
I'd have my lawn showed up last night.
Really?
Yeah. Hey, how are you, Gary?
Good, how are you, sir?
I don't know. We'll find out, though. Oh, man, you brought the big heavy cheese with you, huh? The big cheese?
Right.
Great. I'm glad you guys are here.
How's it going?
Good.
Very good. Everything's looking pretty shiny.
I thought to myself yesterday, we forgot to let all the fire guys know that we're going to have on our agenda the impact fees. And I thought, how do we do this? So I'm really happy you guys are all here. You must check our agendas.
I saw it on the agenda present.
Perfect.
Yeah, and apparently, I didn't know this until Sherry sent it to me, that the county did this back in 2008 and then didn't go anywhere with it. Is that, do you guys remember anything about that?
Yeah, we did the full study.
How come they didn't go with it?
They thought.
Do you want to trouble girl?
Too many people complained, did they? Public hearing?
P and Z.
Huh?
P and Z was the first one to let us slip to nowhere. Then the commissioners called suit. I was the last chief standing.
Speaking of done this.
That is something for a trophy one, the last chief standing.
I fought it till the very end, and it, we did, it just went away. They ended up calling it a big Christmas list, and which it wasn't. Anne stood by me the whole time, and then it just sort of went. I just put it on the shelf.
Was that Winkle and Ray Moore and, and Gordon?
Ray wasn't here. It was, uh.
Bill, uh, Bill, not Bill Eld, Frank Eld?
No.
I think Phil was still on.
No, Ray was coming on. He's the one who corroborated at the P and Z.
He, he beat Frank, so it had to be Frank.
Yeah. Frank was there, and then Frank was the only one that kept supporting it, and it just went away.
That's too bad.
I think a lot of his messaging, because I was talking to the road department advisory board, and I said, you know, we're looking at impact fees, and Gary Swain immediately had meltdown. Not meltdown, he was just questioning it, you know, are we really in favor of impact fees? But impact fees mean different things to different people. So we have to make sure that we're clear on.
He was at every meeting.
Gary was?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so was the president of the McCall Realtors was here. It was mainly a big Realtor group was actually really against it.
Uh, we're, we're one, we're one, you guys, we're, we're still on camera. We're still live right now.
I don't care.
Just so you know.
I think people are familiar with the development in California, are familiar with impact fees in California, and their left is in, you know.
I think it way over their skis, for certain.
We still have a lot of contractors asking us what the, the construction fee is. We just say we don't have it, and we have to mitigate one.
Yeah, that's what we're starting to do now, I think, aren't we? Trying to figure that out.
Well, I think it's important that people are active, you know, that we do have a conversation with everyone, and everybody's at the meeting, so that it's not a surprise to anyone, and we have a full conversation with the community about it. It's hard right now. I mean, how in the world do you do public hearings on this kind of stuff?
You guys remember when I read the old one that looked like they had exemptions? Do you remember any of those exemptions?
I'd have to look back at my paperwork, but there was a few that they were looking at. It was just based on size of properties and the types of buildings they had and the density. Density was huge back then, if you remember. That was the Frank Eld thing. So that played into a part of when they would come and act based on density and then.
I think that's when the two-acre parcel came into effect. It was about that time, which we just changed to one.
I guess we better have this conversation during the public hearing, shouldn't we? Because there's a lot of really good conversation.
Well, we got about seven more minutes, and we can get into it.
So Juan, who's your fishing buddy?
That's my grandson.
Your grandson? I wonder.
Yeah, this is so, he's fished before on the ice, but he's never had, been old enough to use his own electronics and have his own rod system. And so I got him all decked out with his own stuff, and he did fantastic. I fished his dad and I.
That's awesome. Early Christmas?
Yeah, early Christmas.
That's awesome. Good for you guys. What's, how's the ice holding up?
There's about eight to 10 inches for the majority of the rest of the board. Right now, it's a J slush pocket, but it's supposed to get to three degrees tomorrow, so I'll be back out tomorrow. I'm on for the next two weeks, so that's where I'm going to be is the ice.
Did you get yourself one of those Snow Dog ice, ice fishing setups yet?
I use the snowmobile with my ice, ice shanty.
Nice.
You ever want to do some really good perch, we should go down to Wild Horse in Hillco. We've been down there a couple of times. It's a long drive, though. That man whaddahood, holy smokes. They're nice fish, they're nice perch. We were down there one of the trips, and it was one of those teams where you had to lean into the blizzard and have one hole. That's all you could keep clean was one hole. It's like, what the heck am I doing out here, man?
I asked myself that a couple.
Four of us, we had 75 at the end of the day.
Wow.
And then we spent the next hour and a half, two hours cleaning them all there, and they got fish cleaning stations right there at the hotel. Really kind of nice. Yeah, we cleaned fish so late. We, we stayed at the Wild Horse Inn. We went in about 9:30 to have something to eat, and the cook had, she was too drunk to cook, and she quit. She just went home. So the guy said, hey, if you guys want to go ahead and cook your own, have, have at it. So I went into the kitchen there, and I found the patties and found all the fixins, and I couldn't find the fries. And so I went and asked, where does they keep the french fry? Oh, they're downstairs in the freezer downstairs way. You go down this kind of a ricky hole. And here's this very large person sitting in the middle of the stairs, and she was the old cook, but she's asleep. So I kind of stepped around her, you know, and found a bag of french fries and got back up, got all four things all cooked and ready to go, and this guy comes up and says, hey, could you cook me three more over here? And it's like, no, man, I'm not the cook. I'm just here making my dinner. That was funny. Oh, that was fun. We had a lot of fun on that trip. Gets down to three, that ice is going to get pretty thick.
Yeah, it's supposed to be three and then six, seven for the next few days.
Yeah. They were talking about a major snowstorm back east, starting Christmas Eve morning, I think. And it's like, can you imagine wanting to go somewhere for the holidays, drive or whatever, and you're going to get this big massive amount of lake snow? And I can see that mess where you spend all Christmas in your car. I don't know. Ain't really get dumped on back there.
I had all my hair cut off, and now you look in the mirror, and I don't recognize myself anymore.
Really?
I hate it. It better grow quickly.
You guys hop yourself to that candy there by the podium, if you want. Otherwise, Sherry's got to eat it all.
Oh, not me. By the way, we got another box from Idaho Power, and I let the clerk's office have it. They were going, that looks really good. Rita's like, can I open it? And I said, yes, please, eat it. We have all this stuff up here.
It took us a couple of months last time to eat all that stuff up.
She's good. Yeah, no, I'm surprised. She's got a lot of support. You go over there, some kid over there hanging out with her, helping her chores, and then my sister and her has been coming up from Reagan's like almost every weekend, spend the weekend.
And then we'll be notified when one enter, more than likely, if you have hospitals we'll have to go to. The pharmacies are working at home and doing like regular individuals home, in the other grounds, kind of look like scheduled in a hospital. Yeah, I don't know that yet. They're just going to let us know when we're available for, for the E and S.
Right.
It may not be, it'll probably be the Merrick, not the visors, what they're assuming, because visor only meant so much.
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
We're just awaiting game now to tell us when they're going to come.
Right. I tried to see about the sheriff, but they put sheriff and. Yeah.
So they're down after us.
Hey, Juan, do you know, is the coroner on that list as well?
He's on the list.
I know Ada County has like seven of them out right now with, with, with COVID, so they're really, they're bringing in people from out of county to help them.
That's what we're having to say now.
Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next item is an action item. This is a discussion and decision on an impact fee proposal from Galena Consulting. We got the bid. I don't know if everybody's got it. It seems pretty straightforward. I guess the only question I had with Doug, well, a couple of them is, they kind of want to pay as they go. Looks like on a monthly basis. Are you good with that?
We would process them as a regular claim through the, the claim process.
So Doug, since this is something new, would this come out of the general fund? Where would it come out of? Where would it come out of?
I would suggest that it come out of the general fund reserve. At this point in time, would be my recommendations to the commissioners.
Could we, in the future, you know, should we start getting some fee in, could we reimburse that general fund for the cost of this, or?
Not the expenditure, no. And I think the commissioner should have a good discussion about the accounting, how to account for the if, let me, sorry, let me rephrase this. If the commissioners do in fact move forward after a public hearing, after the formal process, to have impact fees provided or recommended for Valley County, we should in fact have a separate account for those impact fees, a dedicated fund for those fees, and not lump them up with the general fund's revenue or the road department revenue. There should be a specific revenue line for these funds, as well as a clear understanding of how those will be expended. And those are for discussions in the, in the future. It's also, if the funds are collected on behalf of the fire departments or, I would have to get some opinion of how to set that up then. So there would still be a, a lot of determination. We would need to determine how to set up the accounting of the impact fees if it was approved.
And I think, if I remember right, Doug, can you guys help me, we were talking about the county, the roads, the EMS, but not fire?
EMS and fire.
EMS and fire together, combined?
Well, they'll be separate, because once the EMS district, and then there's three individual fire districts.
And then the sheriff. So that was five?
Parks.
And what?
Parks.
Parks?
Yeah.
So that, I'm assuming, Doug, we'd have kind of six different impact fees that we total all together. And then what would you do? Like, every quarter, every six months, you would send a check out to each?
And I would have to educate myself a little bit more on how other counties are, that have impact fees, how they're distributing the revenue. I am not, again, right now, I'm not clear on how that distribution would be made.
And when Ann sent this proposal, I just realized that she did this proposal based on the sheriff's office EMS, roads, and parks. So she doesn't have fire in here?
That's what I just noticed, too.
Yeah, and so.
She's, she's separately contracted for fire districts.
She does. Okay.
But you're not paying for, the county's not going to pay for the fire district's portion of the stuff.
Okay.
Even better.
But we will collect those fees. It'll all be kind of, in the end, on one big list, so to speak. So I'm going to go put fire on the list.
If it goes through, part of her whole process is setting up the accounting per Idaho statute and making sure that all that, the accounting of a J I C L revenues in, revenues out for each jurisdiction or agency or department.
Well, and I did notice, too, somewhere in there where she said that you can even charge a little bit to recover her fee to do the study. So I don't know, maybe we want to call that something different. I don't know, maybe that could be under the county part of it, too. We figure, you know, county's probably going to have some splits in it, too, as well, I would assume. You know, it's going to have appraisers, it's going to have treasurers, it's going to have all those different impacts. So we have to remember to do that. Um, I think this is great. I'm surprised, like I said this morning, that this was already done 2008, and then they didn't go forward with it. So it must have been some political heat or something we just don't know about that happened back in 2008. But what I like about it is that new development pays at least half the cost to come in here. And they won't pay full cost, we know that, but it'll pay around half. And I think that's what she explained to us, that she, here, that's kind of the goal. Instead of our taxpayers footing the whole bill, which is what they're doing now. Of course, you know, big subdivisions, big multi-development, going to pay more. And I don't even know what the cities are going to do. I don't know. I know she's already contracted with the city of Cascade. Is she working with McCall, too, or is she, does McCall already have impact fees?
I don't know. I think, Juan, if you guys adopt this, and she is leading the study for Valley County, she's going to be the one to get the cities involved.
And that would be a separate contract and a separate deal from us.
This is just a study to see, you know, if this makes sense. But what I like about it also is we're getting ready to start on the capital improvement plans, and this requires all these different divisions to do a CIP in order to, you know, look to see if this is. in order to, you know, look to see if this is gonna work or not. So it actually moves us forward in our capital improvement plan with her direction and help too, so there's a benefit there.
Where would the timeline be on finishing that improvement, or the cap, the CIP?
We're gonna start it in January. Um, we have all of the, the software that we need now in order to start. And so it'll be, you know, I would say that we'd be done in four to six months.
Well, she talked about an advisory committee too, and so I'm assuming we'd have to set up probably one from each group would be on that advisory committee. Doesn't say how many could be on it, so there may be some private folks who want to serve on it as well, or we might want on there. And I think it's great, the more the better.
Agreed. Well, and she'll help us go out to the community and have this conversation. I hope eventually at the end of this time, we'll be able to get together in person, but if not, you know, we've got to we've got a lot of stuff to set up to make this work and she'll be able to help us do that.
Well, and what I like about it is let's say they come up with a pretty standard fee and I'm just gonna use, say, $2,000 a residence to build, impact fees to build your house up here and then that's split amongst. We can use those fees up or down to control how fast the growth comes in. Kind of the same way you can use CUP permits, you can raise them and lower them to encourage more growth or just try and slow it down a little bit. It's, it's a pretty nice little tool to have. Well, I guess what I'm saying is if it comes in at $20,000, I don't know if I could support that. So we're gonna have to have an influence on that, that final fee and I think that should be up to, you know, a lot of folks, not just us, but
Absolutely.
We don't want to price ourselves out of the market.
Well, not only that, but right now, a lot of our housing is the upper end stuff. They should be paying an impact to the community because of the, what they're having on the community, but there's a lot of ways around too about, you can't, I, I asked some questions. You can't negate this fee for local housing. And that's our concern, is you increase the price of all housing, not just the upper housing. And that's where a lot of people always stumble and have issues with that. So we're gonna have to talk that through thoroughly, is that you can't, we don't want to price ourselves any higher on the housing that we need for our locals. There are mitigation ways to take care of that though, so we're gonna have to have a full conversation on that. How do you mitigate for, if it is local housing?
And I think a lot of that, Sherry, you can do with the size of the development. If you have one resident versus 20 apartment complexes, I think the impact is kind of not the same, but pretty close to the same, and I think you could do it that way.
Ann will tell us that, but there's a lot of legal issues when you start in, when you start putting that impact on one person versus another person. And I think that's where we got in trouble last time, was legally, we have to make sure that we are doing the right thing and I think Ann can be a big benefit to that. She's a good
Yeah, she would definitely know. You guys want to add anything? If you do, please come to the mic.
I think this just starts the conversation. This isn't a decision whether, you know, we're gonna approve something, not approve something, whatever, but we need to do the work to find out if this is a way to help resolve some of our funding issues moving forward.
Well, and I think by the time we get to a public hearing, we're gonna know about what those fees are gonna be. And that's when the leather will hit the road, so to speak, and people say that's $10,000 is too much, $5,000 is too much, what is that? What is that value? I don't, you know, that's when we'll find that discussion. But the way we're doing it now is pretty apparent that we're all paying 100% of the cost of any kind of improvements, so we need to figure out a way to cut that in half, so we can do that, that, to me, that would be a pretty successful thing.
I think that all jurisdictions are looking at this right now. I think impact fees are becoming more and more prevalent in every community because it does help pay for growth. So I think, you know, it's at least worthy of having the conversation of letting the public put their input in. It's just like lot tax, if you will, but those that are coming to visit or those that are coming to join us, that you know, they're helping to pay for all the improvements that we need, we need help with.
Apparently our esteemed Mary Cascade is watching our live feed. She sent me a text that the city does not contract with Galena.
Okay.
So I misread that. But I think this is a good thing that lets us get it out there and we're gonna catch some heat, we're gonna get some yeses and nos and but we gotta start somewhere, so.
Have the conversation anyway.
Anybody else want to add anything? So then I would entertain a motion to approve the, what is it called?
Agreement for
Impact fee proposal?
I'll make a motion that we report on the impact fee proposal that we got from Galena Consulting.
And can you amend that to say that it'll be paid for out of general fund reserve?
I, so, so amended.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any more discussion? Everybody's all good with it? You all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So I guess, who notifies her?
I can reach out and talk to her.
There is a number. There was a number on the contract one here.
I'll find contact information.
Nope, there's no phone number.
She's got a website, you know.
So there, I was gonna say, there's a signatory page in there too. Print that out and sign it since we've agreed.
I will get that printed out right now.
And Gary, if you could share that phone number with us? Maybe text it to all of us or whatever and then we can kind of have our own. Thank you, sir. Okay, if there's no more discussion then on this, our next action item is at 1 o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, it's, we have an executive session for indigent.
Guess I had to put my glasses on. Oh, we do. We have an indigent here in 17 minutes.
I can actually call that an affi.
Can you see Jody's ready? Okay, so then I would entertain a motion to go into executive for Idaho Code 2061B, indigent to Sherry. Thank you guys for coming.
We'll get we go into executive session for Idaho Code 742061B.
Second.
Move to second if I roll call.
Thank you, Manay.
You too.
See you guys, yeah. Have a good Christmas all the way around. Hopefully quiet.
Yeah.
Thanks. I don't know how much longer it's gonna last. It's starting to give me a hard time.
Hasbrook, I dug her in at 12:28.